And if you look on the, on the PC version, you'll be able to load it up. That's why I sent that to you too.
I'm gonna air laundry.
We're gonna let the public know.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna air laundry.
This, what is that?
I'll make that clear. My next conversation is that.
Mm-hmm.
Which because he included all of us, just spoil him. I think so.
Really?
No.
Probably not.
Oh wow. There's so many. My mother-in-law has something, um, really unusual disease.
Oh yeah, I saw the poster.
It's all, um...
You look great.
Sharp, um, tooth and everything, you lose all your strength and all your bones. Everything starts to dissipate.
Oh my god.
And like eventually you just can't walk, you can't move your arm, you can't do anything. Braces on the legs, everything else, but it happens over time. That's right, Terry. Yeah. Yeah. Like, she's brother already has it, he's in his 50s, yeah.
Aww, thank you so much, so nice.
I don't think he has sex this one day.
Yeah, it's nice.
Yeah, no, no, I...
Half of it clear out. I don't know.
Hi.
We've been at a few room for a while.
10 seconds.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Maybe a relative.
Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and good evening, tonight's Tuesday, December 12th. It is 7:30 PM. We just came from executive session, we were discussing committee appointments. Uh, we're gonna go a little bit out of order here. I am gonna start with, uh, some special guests that we have tonight. I'm actually gonna move down here for this. So, tonight we are lucky enough to be officially, I guess, hiring one police officer and promoting another. So, we are gonna start, let's start with Angelique. So if you wanna come up, please, we're gonna have you, uh... You're gonna raise your hand and repeat the oath. Alright. So, uh, I say your name.
I, Angelique Alexander.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So if you want to sign. Do you wanna...
Thank you.
Aww.
Jason, you wanna mention the relation, you know?
Yes, and I, and I should mention that we're very lucky that this has become a family tradition in Rybrook. And that, uh, Angelique's father is also a police officer in the village of Rybrook. So, we're, we're very happy.
Do you guys wanna invite your family for a picture?
Yeah, have a family picture. Aww.
Chief, isn't it?
Hmm?
Chief?
If you want to.
Yeah.
Congratulations again and very pleased to have you as part of the Rybrook staff. So, uh, we're also promoting, uh, Detective Dan Bruno tonight. Uh, he's been, Dan, Sergeant Bruno has, well, now Sergeant, I, I, soon to be. Has it, oh wait.
We can go ahead, go ahead, and we'll do the resolution right after that.
Okay. Okay. Has a distinguished academic and professional background. Uh, graduated from Sacred Heart University and, uh, degree in criminal justice from BU with a master's degree in criminal justice. Uh, he's been with us since 2015 and has been a very competent and reliable officer. In 2019 Sergeant Bruno was chosen as the dare officer for the department. And I know from, from my kids who have done the program and from others that everyone just loved having him as a dare officer and he did a great job. Uh, in 2021, he was appointed as a youth detective. Uh, he's excelled in his, in that role, conducting thorough and timely investigations, collaborating with other agencies and jurisdictions. And certainly this isn't just, uh, the youth officer isn't just for the Blomberg School District. This is also the Portchester School District as well. Uh, Sergeant Bruno has won, has won several awards for his exemplary service, including one for exceptional merit and two unit citations. He's also received numerous commendations and letters of appreciation from the public and his peers and has earned the respect of everyone he's worked with, including this village board. Uh, Sergeant Bruno's now ready to take on the next level of responsibility and we are confident he has the skills, knowledge, and attitude to be a successful sergeant. So, congratulations Sergeant Bruno. I'm gonna have to come up, please, although first... Sorry, I'm looking at her. Alright, before we do this, actually...
You can do it from there, if you like.
Okay, I'm gonna do it from there, so, uh, I don't know.
I'll read the resolution, I'll read it.
Okay.
Considering the appointment to the position of police sergeant, whereas the village board, serving as the Board of Police Commissioners, interviewed three candidates for the position of police sergeant for the village of Rybrook and whereas the Board of Police Commissioners concluded that police officer Daniel Bruno possesses, possesses the necessary skills and qualifications to effectively serve as sergeant in the Rybrook Police Department and whereas the village administrator, on behalf of the village board, offered Daniel Bruno the position of police sergeant on December 6th, to which Daniel Bruno responded positively. Now therefore be it resolved that effective December 13th, 2023, Daniel Bruno of Tarrytown, New York, is hereby promoted to the position of police sergeant in the village of Rybrook Police Department in accordance with the terms and conditions of the offer letter dated December 6th, 2023.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Other than congratulations, no.
Congratulations, well deserved.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. So now that that's done, we can move on to this part. So, if you don't mind, uh, I say your name.
I, Daniel Bruno.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
The duties of police sergeant.
Duties of police sergeant.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Nice.
This is your first.
He's the whole family, the whole family.
Let me jump in here for one with you guys.
Jason, can you get me the book? Thank you. Thanks.
That's it, that's yours.
Yes.
Well, certainly congratulations to Sergeant Bruno and Officer Alexander. We're just so proud of everything that you do for Rybrook. Uh, we're very lucky to have a tremendous police force here in Rybrook, uh, led by Chief Greg Austin. So, I think he deserves a round of applause as well. And that concludes that. Everyone's obviously welcome to stay for the next presentation if they want. If you wanna retire to the cookies or otherwise, you're welcome to do that as well.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations, Patty.
Bye.
Oh, yeah, if you go...
Yeah, I'll get it.
Greg will get it, Greg will get it for you after this picture.
Yeah.
There's a kitchen right back there.
There's a kitchen right behind here.
It'll take two seconds, I can get it.
Freda, Freda, so I'll go on the side, he's gonna look at over here. They're gonna do the presentation. Okay.
Alright, so, uh, we are now gonna move on to our next item on the agenda, which is a report and presentation, uh, for the 975 Anderson Hill Road Sketch Plan. And I believe we have representatives of 975 Anderson Hill Road, which is what we've started calling it after the last meeting. We made sure of that. 975 Anderson.
Yes.
Uh, so this will be visible here up on the screens. Um, I'm assuming it streams anyone at home. We'll be able to see it as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees. Uh, I know Chairman, uh, of the Planning Board is here. My understanding is some of the members of the Planning Board are here. Some of the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals are here. Some of the members of the Architectural Review Board are here. David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zarrenstein Metz here. Very pleased and excited to be representing Charles Cone and Cone Brothers Realty with regard to the former Doral Arrowood property. Joined by Charles, by Dave Fogel, uh, from Cone Brothers, as well as, uh, by, uh, Diego Villarreali from JMC. We're pleased here to be here tonight to begin, in essence, informally, uh, the redevelopment of the Doral Arrowood site. Charles, in a moment, is gonna walk us and walk all of you through a detailed presentation of the concept, um, of his vision for this mixed-use redevelopment. And I say mixed use because, uh, as you will see in a moment, we're proposing a wellness lodge and spa, indoor and outdoor recreational amenities, residential units, um, a medical building, all adequately parked, extremely attractively landscaped. Um, and we, we believe this is going to be a wonderful new attribute to the community. No formal application has yet been filed by my client or our team and the public should be well aware of that. We have met, um, with those who are gracious enough to give us their time. We appreciate the fact that the mayor, um, as well as Trustee Heiser, uh, met with us, Chris and his entire staff, um, as well as Chairman Goodman, uh, have also spent some time with us. We've also met with your building inspector, with your outside planning consultant. And we did all of this at the outset, at an early stage, because we wanted to share with all of you the preliminary vision that Charles and his professional team have formulated. We wanted to get some initial feedback as we were formulating the proposal that we're now willing to share and we look forward to beginning the process formally in earnest. We've also, as I think some of you know, we've been working collaboratively and cooperatively with our neighbors at Doral Greens. Um, I know several of them are here, represented by council. We have been engaging, uh, thank you, we have been engaging, uh, with the folks over at Doral Greens. Uh, why? Because we wanna secure their endorsement for the project. Uh, it has been very important to Charles to be a good neighbor to Doral Greens and we believe Doral Greens is going to be a very good neighbor and quite frankly, a beneficiary of this project. Why? Because a significant amount of, um, the subject site, as you probably all know, winds through the Doral Greens, um, community. Portions of the old golf course are actually quite obviously owned by Cone Brothers and they will be meticulously designed and landscaped. In fact, we have a term sheet signed, um, with Doral Greens and we're now working to try to formulate, uh, formalize some, um, some legal documents and agreements that will speak to landscaping and maintenance and how we're going to, um, coexist together. And we, it's important that the board understands, we fully recognize we cannot pursue this project without some zoning text amendments in addition to site plan review and going through the formal New York State Environmental Quality Review Act or SECRE process. So, we intend to do that, um, hopefully quite soon. Our goal is to commence that process at the beginning of next year. Before I turn to that and before I turn it over to Charles, it's important that we all recognize, Doral Greens, Doral Greens, Doral Arrowood has now been dormant for several years. The site is unsightly, um, it is unproductive. It is crying out, and quite frankly, Rybrook is crying out to restore one of its flagship, um, hotel facilities. You're about to see something that we don't have here in Westchester County. It's something I think all of us who live and work and raise families in the county, we deserve something like what we are prepared, what Charles is prepared to bring to the community in terms of design, in terms of landscaping, in terms of the quality of amenities, in terms of a place to go and enjoy with your family, with friends, a place to entertain and have a functional ballroom where activities and, and, um, events can be conducted. A place where we can have jobs, tax ratables, and something that fits into the community and onto this property. There was something there for a long time. I, I went there, uh, many years ago. I think one of the first times I ever played golf was with my father on that nine-hole course. It's time to bring Doral back in the fashion that Charles is prepared to do. It's, it's time to bring back commerce and an attractive neighbor for the entire community. And I'm excited to, uh, share with you what we've now been putting together and we look forward to coming back and working with all of, of you, uh, the other boards that will clearly be involved. Mr. Chairman, we, we know we're gonna be spending a lot of time with you. Uh, we hope to be, um, efficient, but a lot of good time. And, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Charles to share his design and his vision and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Board of Trustees. Thank you, members of the Planning, uh, Council, Community, and also neighbors. And, um, I'm very excited to be here tonight. I, uh, grew up in Harrison, New York. I'm a member of, uh, a group of people that, uh, went through the public school system and I knew Arrowood, I knew the Caskel family, they were, uh, friends of my family. It's been a long journey to get here tonight and we're very excited to share with you something that we think will raise the bar significantly and really put, uh, this project and Rybrook at the forefront of a lot of people's, uh, thoughts and minds and, uh, providing recreation, providing ballrooms, providing, um, venues for celebrations, weddings, bar mitzvahs and the like. And also a place for people to come and feel good about themselves and to find a way to lead lives that are more productive and also more healthy. So wellness is a very important thing for all of us today. You know, it started, I guess, with nutrition and then it's, it's not just spa. It's, it's about wellness of the whole being. And, uh, so, you know, Doral Arrowood, I guess, its inspiration was American, American Native Americans and that was the Arrowood idea. So, at the early part of this project, what, what went through my mind is, how can we connect the community and this project in a way to be successful? And the idea was to take advantage of the location, which is Rybrook, but we're really at the beginning of the Adirondacks here. So the style is, uh, architectural style is Adirondack camp style. That's what it's known as, camp house. And, um, you'll see some of the, I think, uh, similarities in the imagery. The idea is to create something that's transportive. We have a, uh, a pond on the property that, what we've done, and we'll show you in a moment, is to relocate the, uh, the hotel structure so that the access point is on this pond and our plan is to make it larger and to make it a real feature. And the idea is to create a, a transportive experience so that folks from the immediate area, from New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut, don't have to drive three or four hours to go to another state and to another city. We want them to be here. So, um, with that, why don't we begin? We have put together a terrific team of professionals. Our architectural, uh, team is out of Southern California, but they've worked all over the world. They've done over 400 hotels, many resorts. Of course, our friends from Armonk, JMC, is on the planning and civil side. Our landscape architect is the Edward Durrell Stone Associates Group that, uh, actually cut their teeth on the PepsiCo campus many years ago. So, and of course, our law firm, Graphic Design, uh, it's, we've, we've got a really a world-class group of professionals. So this is a slide that shows you the existing property. Maybe Diego will use the cursor to show you where Doral Greens is to the east. Doral Greens is to the east.
Oh, Doral Greens, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's over here. There we go, right. And the hotel property, the hotel property is in the shaded area.
That's right there.
And now, let's flip to the next slide, which will give you an idea of the relocation. So, you can see that it kind of has two arms and a central area that, um, the access point is the pond. Right. The parking, the surface parking remains the same and we have added parking, uh, some underground parking that we've added. So, here's a brief synopsis of what it is. Seventy-seven, I thought it was?
Seventy-seven acres is the portion of the property that Cone Brothers controls. That doesn't include Doral Greens itself, it's seventy-seven acres. When you look at the overall property, it's, yeah, it's the ninety acres.
No, but theirs is in addition to the ninety.
Theirs is in addition, I think that's
I think so.
Excluding one another piece.
No, I think you got that wrong. Okay, but the idea is for, uh, 220 hotel rooms. I believe, um, that, uh, Doral Arrowood had 360 rooms, so this is smaller. And it's about 150, um, wellness hotel rooms. There is a conference center, uh, component of 75 rooms and there is some, uh, wellness suites that are 40 rooms. There are, residences are split into two places. In the hotel itself, the top two floors have 40 residences and then there's a separate standalone building to the west that would have 70, 70 or 75 residences. And, um, total of 1,300 plus parking. And, uh, the wellness, there's a small wellness building, uh, with two wings comprising about 50,000 square feet. And the conference center I mentioned and there's a host of amenities, uh, indoor and outdoor. So this is the fully landscape plan of what we're planning. Is there something you wanna point out, Diego?
I think it just, this really, uh, starts to put together the site plan portion of it and starts to show you the different components, uh, of the overall development. Uh, as Charles was indicating, this is the hotel and conference center and you can see the design and the U shape of it and the access and the focal point being on the lake that's being created at the bottom portion of the hill there. And then as you move south on the property itself, this is the residential building and then this is the office building and Anderson Hill Road is on the bottom portion of the page here, just to orient everybody. King Street is off to the right-hand side of the page here. And again, what Charles was really talking about was the design of the project, how it took into character, uh, the land that's out there right now, the topography of the property. Everything is really geared and slopes down towards that pond. So this development plan, when you look at it in this flat context and you'll start to see some of the graphic images in the next couple of slides, everything's really built with that hillside as it works down that hill and goes down towards that pond. Everything is layered, um, i- in the property, starting with the parking lot. This is the existing parking lot, it's remaining pretty much exactly where it is right now. There's no real changes to that and then everything starts to work its way down, uh, to the lake itself.
Let's go to the next slide. So here's a, a shot from the, uh, from the pond looking to the east. And we have a structure that goes from the land onto the water, which is a lake house. You can see the elements of the, um, Adirondack type style. There's a rustic character to it. That's the entry on the east side, the drop-off.
Charles, wanna describe the entry that, uh, you would envision?
I think we have an, um, the, I, the, what's, I think, important for the, um, for everyone to understand is my experience with Arrowood, and I'm sure you'd agree with me, that when you would walk in, the ceiling was very low when you came in. I felt like, I mean, I'm not very tall, but I felt like I was gonna hit my head. So, um, having gone with my younger kids, uh, skiing out west years ago, you would go and stay in a lodge and a lodge would have fireplaces and it would have some loftiness to it. So the idea was to create something in the center, an atrium in the center. That is, it's a void, but the idea is to walk in and there be a sense of, of, of comfort, a sense of, um, I don't know, it's hard to describe, but, um, a lodge-like feeling, that you feel that you're in a lodge. You can think of the snow and the wind and the rain, but you're in a, in a safe place, a little bit of a cocoon. So, that's why there is an elevation in the center. It's kind of the key feature. Again, it's the A shape of the Adirondack style. This is the drop-off to the southeast, which is, the conference center has its own drop-off. As you may recall, the existing conference center is off to the northeast. The idea is to, um, start demolition shortly. We're actually doing the interior demolition now and then move into the, um, structural demolition, uh, in the next several months so that within six months, it's, it'll be gone. This is looking out from the, um, first floor when you walk in. Most of the, uh, property, most of the development steps down away from the entry and it gives you an idea, you can see the, the lake, the lake house, the pool. There's a, uh, a, uh, you know, a lawn, large lawn space for private events. There's a, uh, a little, uh, swimming pool cafe off to the left. And this is, uh, now looking at the plan. You would enter, there's a lobby, there are two destination restaurants on either side plus a hotel restaurant, so there'd be three, uh, restaurants there. The, uh, conference center is off to the left. The hotel is off to the, the, the wellness hotel is off to the right and, um, there is the, there's a spa pool up, uh, on the right-hand side and the tennis courts are to the left. And the idea is to redevelop the golf course, uh, preserving many of the natural wonderful trees that are there and to celebrate a nature experience, hiking trails, meditation areas, to, uh, you know, maybe have your iPhone and learn about different trees and, and all of the horticultural aspects. This is a, uh, a section that gives you an idea of where we start on the left side with the check-in. You can see the, the void where the, uh, to the other side of the residences, right over there. The banquet spaces are below, you know, at the lower level and there's a function lawn as well. But it gives you an idea on the lower part of the slide, give you an idea of how we, we sit next to our neighbor, uh, to the east, Doral Greens.
I'm just gonna chime in real quick on this slide as well. One of the things that we spoke about, again, the topography of the land and how everything works towards, uh, the lake on the right-hand side of the page here. And again, that was utilized with how the building was built into the hillside. So, what's facing Doral Greens at the front entrance of the property, uh, is, is at a certain elevation and then the backside where you walk out onto the main terrace and the front lawn, it's actually two levels below that. So, we're burying two levels into the hillside and then you walk out onto a lower level towards the lake and that's why you see, uh, this function lawn down here and then the drop-off area that sits at this higher elevation.
Charles, most of your rooms do look out towards...
All the rooms face, none of the rooms face our neighbors to the east. Everything faces to the northwest, to the, you know, the lake and the trees.
And I think it's important just actually to point that out, going back to this slide, and this really is what shows it. It's a single-loaded corridor. You have the corridor that leads you to your rooms here, and then all the rooms are facing the lake itself.
So there are no bad views.
Okay, the next one.
Their interior gardens.
So this is now the other two portions of the property, which is the residential building and the medical office space. We thought that that would be a good combination with the wellness concept. And we've been looking to establish a relationship with a major hospital group, whether it's Wild Cornell or Yale New Haven. So that's something that we think is important, that gives it a real legitimacy. This is, this is a rendering of the backside of the residential building. Again, in the same style. Everything is an organic, harmonious approach. And this is the elevation of the residences.
Same concept again here because of the topography and the land. We're actually burying the building into the hillside, although this is, excuse me, just one level is buried here. So when you're standing at the front entrance, it's still higher, but it's only one level lower at the backside.
Now, this is a rendering of the medical, the two medical wings. Each one's about 25,000 feet, just two-story buildings. And that gives you the section of that. And this gives you the view from the Kingsfield, I believe.
Correct.
So that's what Kingsfield would see. This is existing conditions of the shrubbery that's there now, trees. This is a overview of the hotel property, a bird's-eye view.
Again, from the Kingsfield direction, but again, much more elevated.
Right.
Gives you that bird's-eye view.
And you can see off to the left where Durrell Greens is. It's just some block buildings for the purposes of the rendering, and you can see where the residential building is to the right, parking. Now, this is the Durrell Green plan that we've been working with their consultant on. And if you look at the circle in the upper right, you'll see that you can see just the very roof area only from the Durrell Green northwest corner.
And just to add to this one a little bit, what the landscape architect again really worked on was identifying the existing buffers that are there now, the trees that are going to be maintained. And you can see that all highlighted in green. The intention is to maintain those mature trees that exist there between the parking lot and the residents themselves. But then they also identified areas where we can supplement landscaping. And that's that maroon or brown color that you see there. Those are supplemental areas that will be landscaped as part of the plan, again, working with the existing conditions that are out there now.
This gives you another example of what would be seen from Durrell Green. That's from the back of those homes that are immediately behind the parking.
Yeah, the emergency access. That's the key location here. It's right where that emergency connection is from the existing parking lot to Durrell Greens.
That emergency connection would be preserved.
Right, continued, right. This is another example of what would be seen. So we've been very mindful of making ourselves as attractive and as, you know, inauspicious as possible.
Another view shed a little further south.
That's right. And the vision for Durrell Greens, this is a detail, it's all about a rewilding of the site and a restoration of the ecosystem that once existed many, many years ago, involving regrading, removing, cleaning up, and a lot of natural flowering and shrubbery and landscaping, meadows.
This is just the elevations. Just, we thought it was important, again, we touched on this beforehand, just to give everybody some context with the elevation and grade change that occurs across the property. And you could see the parking lot, that existing parking lot, if we were to establish an elevation for that, is at about elevation 320. And by the time you go down to the lake, it's at elevation 250. There's over 70 feet of grade change between the existing parking lot and where that lake is on the bottom portion of the property. And again, it was really just to show the relationship of those grades, how the buildings are being built into the hillside, and then how we're utilizing those grades to help with the building construction, but then also help with screening and vegetation and everything else on the property.
Okay. So our goal tonight was to share this vision with you, to introduce it to those of you that, who had not already seen it, both from the board trustees and the other boards. We are hoping to get enough of a nod from the board of trustees that we can indeed proceed. As I said earlier, our next step would be to file a rezoning petition along with an application for conceptual site plan review. We would submit our secret documentation, and then we would begin what we know will be a thoughtful and thorough environmental planning and engineering review with your board, the planning board, your outside consultants, and anyone else who ultimately is involved in the project. We're basically ready to go. We're anxious to get your sense and your feedback. We're happy to answer any questions. As I alluded to earlier, and I just want to make it totally clear, we expect to be continuing our discussions and finalizing our agreement with Durrell Greens. They know it's not final. We know it's not, but we have a signed term sheet, and we can't thank them enough for the amount of time we have been working collaboratively over pretty much the last year. Before we got to this point, it's important for you all to know, we've been at this, Charles, for over a year, really. So a lot of thought, a lot of time and energy has been put in, not only to the design, but working with our neighbors and getting ready to be here. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving us some time. Thank you, Chris, for coordinating this, and we're happy to answer your questions.
So thank you for the presentation, and I would say that this is a, this is simply a sketch plan review. So this is, you know, not anything that, you know, we're not voting on anything tonight. We're not, you know, there's no decisions really that have to be made. A lot of it is just to inform the public of what a, what a potential development in this site might look like. Also, for the board, the village board at this point, and I would say, you know, a member of a different board, if they would so choose, to give initial comment. You know, now that, now that we've seen it, we've seen what the potential is for the site, now would be a time to kind of let, let people know your initial thoughts on what you're seeing. A couple of comments from myself. I would just say, well, first of all, we're always excited to have investment in Rybrook. We believe this is a great community, and we've been certainly missing our hotels, and we are glad to see a proposal that has a hotel component to it. That is something that we do like, the idea of. I would remind of something else that was said during, when we had initial meetings, that our code does require the 10% affordable units for any residential development. So that would still be the case. But I would open this up to the board for any comment.
I was just going to say that now seeing it for the second time, what I find most intriguing is it's going to make the Village of Rybrook a destination. And I think that's fabulous for us.
I think it's a wonderful project. It looks very interesting. You know, I can only say, you know, let the games begin. It's going to be a, it's going to be a juggling act with the approvals, but I'm sure, you know, I think going forward, it looks like a substantial project, to say the least. A lot of planning involved, but I like it. It's nice.
It's very attractive. It reminds me of kind of woodlock pines. Is that what you were going for, to a degree?
Well, we wanted to do our own thing.
Yes, I mean, it is different, but it will enhance, to David's point, Rybrook and our reputation.
Anyone ever been to Beaver Creek? That was the, when I first met Charles.
Well, nothing of ski.
Okay, but Charles mentioned that to me the first time we met.
Have you been there to Beaver Creek?
Yes.
You know, if you're near to Beaver Creek.
It definitely reminded me of skiing.
That's what the inspiration was.
Yes, I could totally see it. Exactly. And I think it's going to be a great asset to our village. It will remind me of skiing every time I see it.
So she won't be staying there. She'll be traveling out west because she's inspired by it.
The idea is that even if you live down the street, we'd love you to come and spend the night. And you don't have to go too far. We might even pick you up.
Oh, that's even better.
The whole idea is to be transportive, to feel.
What activities will you have on the pond? Will there be water skiing?
No, no, it's not big enough for that. But I think there may be some small rowboats and things like that. I think that would be fun, maybe a canoe or two.
How large is the pond?
Yeah, well, the idea is to use that lake house for yoga in the morning, and I think that it'll be great for retreats, and we'll have the largest ballroom that's divisible into six ballrooms in the county. Something that, right now, the largest ballroom is at Brayburn Country Club, which isn't really open to everyone. A little better food.
We should add, we should add to everyone, for everyone in the room, too, all copies of all these documents are on our website, have been on there since last Friday. So, you know, if anybody wants to look at it closely, or zoom in, or anything, all of this is on our website.
And again, everything is still conceptual. Nothing's been finalized and filed, so there may still be some tweaks.
Right.
But thank you for announcing.
And we understand that absolutely. And, you know, as alluded to before, I should let the public know that the property owners have been applying for demolition permits, and so that's moving forward. The building that was there was in no condition to even be rehabilitated. So we, certainly, I know our, you know, our engineering folks, our building inspector, our police and fire are happy to see that that building is not there anymore because it was becoming a little bit dangerous. So we're glad to see that. And with the, and then just procedural, the next step would be filing for site plan application.
Yep, the site plan application and the rezoning petition, which would become at the same time, and that would be introduced. The staff would look over the documents to make sure the application is complete, and when the application is in a position that it's ready to go to the board, it would start, it would come to the village board, and however long it's at the village board, and then at some point, the village board will refer at a minimum to the planning board right up front, so.
And I'm expecting...
And we have to, we also have to initiate the EIS process.
I was going to say, I'm expecting this would be a full EIS.
I mean, yep, you should, we'll wait and see what comes in, but I would expect.
I do have a follow-up question, if I may. How do you envision the residential units working? Are they rentals? Are they owners? How large are they?
We haven't decided what the, whether it would be for sale or for rent, but I would say it'll be high-quality, raise the bar among the best residential opportunities for people that don't want to have a house. There are a lot of people that maybe have homes here now that want to downsize, that want to stay in the neighborhood, maybe they have family here, maybe they are snowbirds in the winter, maybe they're down south, down in Florida, wherever, and want to be back here in the summer. So the idea is to come up with something really spectacular.
Right. I'm thinking more along the lines of not cost per se, but size of the units, and how would, if they have children, how would it affect our schools?
I really don't think that this is a product for families. I don't think that's the plan. The plan is for it to be for people that don't want a house, that want to be, that want hotel services and not have to worry, you know, put your key in the door and leave and come back, and, you know, your bed is made, you can have dinner in your apartment, the idea, and laundry service. All of the things that I think characterize a Class A hotel and a Class A residential development.
And would those units be able to be leased out?
I don't know. I don't know. We, that's, you know, way down the road as to putting a plan together. That would be something we'd have to work on through the Attorney General's office. It's, you know, I would hope that we would attract a type of purchaser that is not really interested in leasing it out. It's a Rybrook home. You know, part of the inspiration for the apartment house, our original thoughts were to develop townhomes. Original plan envisioned about 70 townhomes, and I just got a little scared of that. I thought that's a lot of houses to build. Couldn't do it all at once. And I know that there's been a very successful project in Ry that has a St. Regis flag on it, and the idea is to do something along the lines of that and bring that here.
Just following up on the schoolchildren issue, we hear you. It's obviously an important question. I'm sure the school district officials are concerned, your board is concerned. It'll be part of our secret analysis. I'm convinced we will be able to provide more board and the planning board with sufficient empirical data of what's likely in terms of market attraction and who's going to end up living here. There's plenty of data on that.
Sure, I'm sure. I just wanted to think about if you've had that thought process.
We have.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to be young children. If anything, it would be, you know, college kids coming home to see their parents or use the, use the facilities.
All right.
Actually, I have one more question. So are you, you know how Durrell sort of had like memberships available to the community and the public? Is that something you think you were going to have, or you haven't approached that yet either?
I've thought about it, but I'm concerned that we don't have gigantic fitness facilities. I think they're generous for the number of hotel rooms that we would have. And I'm cautious. The last thing I want to do is to have someone that is a hotel member, hotel guest, or a condominium owner not be able to get on a treadmill or something like that. So I, I'm not thinking in that direction. This should be a place where you want to go and get a physical and be able to eat, you know, food that is spa food, but also if you want a hamburger, you can have one. So it's something for everyone, but with a wellness vision.
All right. I would also invite, we have, we have chairs of some of our boards here. I believe we have planning, zoning, and ARB all present, and I would invite any members of those committees, if they have a question to, or a comment, to please come up. Rob.
You have to, only because of the microphone.
Yeah, because of the microphone.
Okay, I'm Rob Goodman. I'm chair of the planning board. What is the relationship between the medical facility that you're going to be developing and the residences? And how are those people that are going to be attending the medical facility, are they going to have access to the amenities in the sort of residential facility? How are you working that out?
No. Think of it as a medical, a medical office building. I don't know if it's going to have an affiliation with a hospital or not by preferences that it does. We may end up...
Yeah, yeah, me need you to speak to the microphone, sorry.
We're not sure what the affiliation will be, but the idea is to attract doctors that have practices that would be complementary to the idea of providing whatever medical services are needed to make the wellness, wellness vision successful. That's the connection. It's not just to have a dentist or a veterinarian. It's not for that. And so the answer is that it'd be going to a doctor's office, no different than you would go to a doctor's office today. So someone going to the, to have a physical, if they're not staying at the hotel or they don't live there, is not going to really have access, other than if they want to have dinner or something like that. Want to create an air of exclusivity, which will make it distinguished and a destination, as you said.
You can have a follow-up.
Excuse me. Quick, so the medical facilities for the residents and the hotel guests only, or no, it's for the public?
No, no, it has a separate road entrance from Anderson Hill Road.
So for the public, any doctors?
Of course, of course.
Okay, good.
So it's really an office building?
Yeah. Okay.
For doctors.
Well, you know, what we want to do is, it's not a lot of, originally, there was 100,000 square feet approved for our office, so this is 50,000 square feet.
Okay.
75,000. Sorry, I corrected. 75. So this is smaller and more intimate, and again, in the same architectural style. So it's complementary to the vision for the whole development. The idea is to make all the parts that are separately powered... The idea is to make all the parts that are separately powerful synergistically powerful when they all come together, that's the idea. So that's why we have a conference element to it, where people can, we have seventy-five rooms, that'll be not the same room as the main wellness hotel or the spa suite. So it'll attract, I think, different folks.
Are the seventy-five rooms part of the 220?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have other, any other questions or comments from our other boards?
It's a hundred forty-five and then seventy-five.
It's up to the mayor, huh? It's up to you for representative.
Yeah, please, I know that, yeah, please.
My name is Robin Markell, I was the fourth person to move into Doral nineteen ninety-one. I always had the hotel across the street from me, which I loved, and now I have this atrocity across the street from me. So, speaking for myself, and I'm sure many of the residents at Doral, I look forward to having this destination wellness community that you've talked about, showed us about. It sounds, looks very appealing, we look forward to having this in our backyard, it'll be so much better than what we have, and I'm very excited about it. I want to ask a question, I don't know to who, because we've been living like this for quite a while. What kind of timeline, I mean, what happens and how long will it take for us to have something that isn't going to be a demolished piece of something, and start to see what might look beautiful in our backyard?
Yeah, and we can't answer that until a full application comes in, and we see the zone, actual zoning amendments and things like that that have to still be submitted. But that'll give us a better indication, because then the process will be, the environmental review will take some time, you know, that new traffic work, and a lot of other, other work to complete the environmental review. You're looking at, it's going to be an extended timeframe, it's not going to be just a few months or anything like that, we're talking about a longer term. It is a big project, but it's a substantial one that'll, you know, hopefully change the community really for the, be a great improvement in addition to the community, but it's going to take some time to review it.
So we have to be patient and look forward to it?
Yes.
Thank you. How long is this application process, it's complicated, is it, should it take?
Depends on how, how much information is provided that the boards require, you know?
Everything you need.
The, I think the process that's being followed is very helpful, the sketch plan review is a great way to introduce it to the community, you know, get it out there, we're very transparent in Rybrook. We can assure the public, whenever things get submitted, we're going to create a development page that will have all the documentation, all in one spot, so we try to stay very organized with that and very transparent. So I can assure you that part of it, but other than that, you know, I think this is the right process. The more information you can get upfront and feedback, the shorter it'll make it in the long, long term, knowing where we're going.
Somebody else was raising.
Yeah, and I think with the EIS, I mean, a lot of it, you know, the speed at which things come is, you know, from my limited experience with EIS, because we haven't had a tremendous number of them, and, you know, in my ten years on the board, ten-plus years on the board, is that, you know, a lot of it has to do with how quickly we're receiving the information, and so that our consultants can then turn that information back around, ask questions. And so there's a lot of back and forth through the whole process. And, you know, because we're, you know, obviously, anything of this size, we're going to do our due diligence, we're going to take our time on it to make sure it's done to the satisfaction of this board, so that we're doing our jobs and protecting the community, while at the same time also understanding that this is a significant development that will have far-reaching impacts on Rybrook.
We look forward to working with Sarah, we've already met with Sarah on this, and we know that she'll be diligent, so.
She's here today.
Yes. That's how diligent she is.
It is.
Other people were raising.
Yeah, this really is in a public comment set, but I'll certainly open it up to a few more, you know, if there's a few, if there's a few other questions or comments.
It's on the planning board.
It's on our planning board.
Please. Please ask it, now's the time.
Unfortunately, we do know you, John.
John Grusen, I'm on the planning board, very general question.
Sure.
On the first look, you have to like the project, I mean, the operation is very, but what's there for people that are not guests, that are not residents? What's there for the community? For example, I'm a golfer. A few times I used to go there and play golf. You're taking that away from me now. What are you offering, as a community member?
I'm offering venues that you don't have now, if you have a daughter getting.
Access to restaurants?
Access to restaurants, access to the ballrooms for events, for weddings and other celebrations that are going to other places that aren't in Rybrook anymore.
Yeah, that's not what I really had in mind. I have to pay for that. The trails, can I walk there?
This is a private development.
So there is really, in essence, not much for me as a resident of the community.
Well, I think that.
Other than taxes, the tax revenue and all of that, yes.
No, but if we're successful, it's going to raise the value of everyone's home, and raise the awareness.
I know, I know, but that's not the nature of my question.
Yeah, and I would, I would ask, you know, it's really because this is the format of this, if you could kind of address the questions at me, the way that we would in a planning.
I'm going to have an opportunity to ask this question from that chair. But, you know, I think it's for the public in general, I think the public likes to know, is there any give back to the village, so to speak, as a result of this beautiful project? There are not many opportunities for us to develop in the village, we are all built out of community. And we don't have many amenities as a community as a whole. We rely on Portchester, and somebody else's, you know, Harrison, White Plains, or someplace like that. So I would like to see something in a form, I hate to use the word give back, but for no better expression than that.
Right, and as, and I would.
It costs money to build these things, it costs money to make it, I'm all familiar with that.
Here, because all the answers aren't there yet.
Yeah, and we understand that all the answers aren't there yet fully, and during the, during the process, I know with any development like this, you know, a lot of times in our code, there's either the parkland or the payment in lieu of parkland. So, you know, obviously, we'll cross that bridge.
You hit one of my responses, but I want to respond to the question, because in fairness, if you played golf there, unless you figured out a way to sneak in there that my dad and I couldn't figure out, we had to pay to go to that private course. So it was a private course that charged money for people to enjoy, so it was a commerce-generating facility. You and I both may like golf, but we also both have to pay for golf. Secondly, in terms of give backs, this community is crying out for tax ratables, hotel tax ratables, employment, affordable housing, and stimulating your local economy. So with all due respect, and I know, I already can tell, we're going to debate this when I get to the planning board, but I will tell you, as a frontline land use practitioner, those are give backs to a local community, and that's why tonight, I, I kind of feel like I got the nods that I was hoping I did. No one on the board has said, Mr. Cone, you're crazy, you're out of your mind, take your project, pack it up, go home. In fact, so far, and we really do thank the entire community, the Rybrook community has been very welcoming of our team, of the project. And I can assure you, Mr. Mayor, you said it, there will be reg fees, there will be application fees, there will be inspection fees. He doesn't want to hear all that, but we're going to, it's all part of the process. So the community, I can assure you, Rybrook's going to do pretty well, there are a lot of, a lot of other communities in Westchester that wish they could have what's about to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other, please?
I'm not sure either.
Hi, my name is Phyllis Milton, I've been a resident in Doral Greens for twenty-eight years, so I'm not as old as Robin.
We can strike that for directions.
She understands, old as far as being here. Anyway, I am on the board, and I represent my colleagues on the board, as well as a hundred and thirty-eight homeowners, who are very interested in what's happening here. For the most part, we've been meeting with the Cone team, they've been very open, we've been very open. We've told them about Doral's needs, what we'd like to see. Generally speaking, we are positive about what we saw, we think it'll be very good for the community, and we expect it to be good for us. So we have a lot of things we have to work on with them, the landscaping for one, what we're going to see when we look out our windows, and things of that nature. But they've been very cooperative, as have we, and I expect good things.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and just to one point that was brought up earlier, I would just say that, you know, as, as I mentioned before, we're not really voting on anything, this is just a sketch, a sketch plan review. So, yes, you're seeing nods from us, it's not to say that, you know, everything's going to sail right through, we know that there's going to be some back and forth with the different, with the different boards.
Expect nothing less.
Including this one, and we understand that the project, you know, there's going to be tweaks, and the project's going to change along the way. But I'd, I'd say that generally speaking, I think that this board is, it's a positive reception from, from what we're seeing tonight. Am I wrong?
No, absolutely, I think our planning board and our architecture review board will definitely give you a run, which is good, that's why they're there.
That's exactly.
They're there to help us make a decision, so.
We will have our work cut out for us.
And we do.
I look forward to it.
And on those boards, you have a lot of, you know, these are people volunteering their time, as are we up here. So it's a lot of dedicated residents and individuals who care a lot about the community, and with some great professional staff that really help us along the way and give us the advice that we need. So we're very much looking forward to the process.
Right, it was a great way to expedite it by having all of our colleagues here from the village.
And as Chris says, we're very transparent in everything that we do, this being one of the steps. And we certainly, you know, as we get, as Chris mentioned, as we get information, it will all be available to the public.
We will see you hopefully next month.
Good luck.
Enjoy the holidays, thank you for the.
Have a good holiday.
Happy holidays, thank you. Thank you. Not everyone.
Thank you, you went backwards.
So we do have some other items on the agenda, so I would ask that, or do we want a two-minute recess while we, you know, I think we'll take a, we'll take a five-minute, we'll take a five-minute recess.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah.[202.45]
...a year from now to see that hopefully there were some improvements made in, in some of the technology being used. Questions? Nope, comments?
She should have a motion to-
Yeah, I was gonna say, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
For the, for-
To move with the one-year-
To move with the one-year exemption.
To move to run, to go with a one-year extension. Second.
Questions, comments?
Nope.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
Just to be clear, so the extension goes to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, because again, then the fall season, you could use it, but that gives you time to make another request if you choose to, to the village board prior to the following May.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye. Happy holiday.
Yes.
All right, moving on to resolution number three, considering requests for an extension exemption of chapter one fifty-eight, section two point one of the village code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for the Blind Brook Golf Club.
Whereas on April eleventh, the village board of trustees approved a local law enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May first to September thirtieth, effective May first of next year, and whereas under the village code, properties with at least five acres can apply for a full or partial extension or exemption, and whereas an application has been distributed to eligible properties or known eligible properties and also placed on the website, and whereas on October twenty-sixth, representatives of the Blind Brook Club submitted an application for an exemption of the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, now therefore be resolved, that after consideration of the intent of the local law as well as considerations raised in the application, from representatives of the Blind Brook Golf Club, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees either approves, denies, or approves of the conditions, the request for an exemption or extension from enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf plan, leaf blower ban at the Blind Brook Golf Club.
Thank you, Chris, and we have representatives from the Blind Brook Club.
Yeah, thank you ver- very much, everybody, and Mr. Mayor and members of the trustees and Mr. Bradbury and Mr. Rivera, thanks, thanks so much, it's great, good to be here and have an opportunity to show off the club a little bit. I would like to, I'm here with Michael Ford, Michael's our golf course superintendent, he'll explain the use, the equipment, current, uh, equipment that we use and how we use it, why we use it, and I'd like to just give a little bit of background on the club, hopefully I won't bore you too much, and I'll be, uh, be over shortly. Is it okay if I go over there?
Uh-
You have the mic?
If we have a microphone that you-
We have a portable, Greg, do you have the portable?
As in, do you think the camera can see the map?
Hmm.
That it may be better-
That one should be, just angle, if you could just angle it with, so the board can see it on the camera.
So the camera can see the map.
Perfect.
There we go.
It can go in front of, it can come closer in front of the thing.
Well, there's multiple cameras.
The timing worked out tonight, at least you got to see-
One there.
The timing worked out, at least you're able to see the application earlier, too, or the sketch plan, right?
Yeah, that's, that is going, that is a potential neighbor of yours as well, so.
So, so I, I think, um, uh, there was a, a diagram like this in the application, so, but I'll point out just a few things that, uh, on it that, uh, might be of interest. Um, the Blind Brook Club's been in existence since nineteen fifteen. It, uh, it is a business and property, it's operated as a, as a golf club ever since, and, uh, continues to, uh, look forward to go, doing it for many, many more years. Uh, the original drawing, I wish I had brought over, I, I have a photograph of this entire area and a little bit down in this area before any, any buildings were, uh, uh, there was any building except the golf course. There were probably a handful of trees on it, maybe two handfuls of trees on the property, so it was bas- basically a cleared property at the time. Um, just to orient you a little bit more, this is the clubhouse, Anderson Hill Road, Country Ridge Road, uh, the Blind Brook, and of course, over closer to Michael, off there is the enclave and then, then King Street. Um, just to give you some sort of idea of scale, um, I just happen to have one, this is, uh, one foot, one foot, uh, or pardon me, one inch equals a hundred feet, so you can see right here, an inch from right about there, just about this, this line right here is a hundred feet from the backyard property, and if you take, uh, if I went forward all the way up here, it's seventeen inches, or about seventeen hundred feet, nearly a third of a mile from the, uh, our, our neighbors on, uh, Country Ridge and also about seven hundred feet from the enclave over there. So our, our neighbors are on this side and a little bit on the other side. Uh, scale-wise, we're probably talking about twenty-five to thirty acres of fairway, and if, for those of you who don't play, uh, golf, this is this large area in here you'll see outlined. By the way, this happened just to be from a twenty eighteen re- restoration plan that our, uh, golf course architect put together. I'm sure many of you are looking at the square greens, usually they're round on maps, but where Blind Brook is unique and that it has some square greens. So, um, I'll let Michael speak to the equipment, how we use it, when we use it. Um, Westchester, by the way, is a highly competitive area for golf courses, and, and the, uh, this is where if you are starting out in a business, you want to come down here and work, because this is where it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, using cutting-edge things. We have, over the years, introduced electric equipment, and I'll let Mark, Michael, uh, speak to that a little bit.
Well, thank you for your time this evening. I'm the golf course superintendent at the, uh, club and responsible for maintaining the golf course and all of the surrounding grounds, uh, within our property. Uh, in total, it's a hundred and sixty acres, and of that hundred and sixty acres, we roughly maintain about forty acres of it is what we'll call deemed fine turf, it's a very highly manicured, um, turf that we, we, uh, we maintain to play the, the recreational sport, uh, of golf. To Bruce's point, uh, probably twenty-five to thirty of those acres is fairway, and that's why we're asking for the exemption, uh, this evening for the application, because there is no, uh, comparable, uh, electric, uh, powered, uh, equipment that we can, uh, you know, maintain the, the larger areas on our property. If you've noted in our application, we intend on purchasing, uh, several backpack blowers, all electric, for next year to use during the period from May to September on our smaller areas, our greens and tees, uh, but for fairways, there is, there is no machine that, um, currently electric-powered that, uh, can, can get the job done in a, in a timely fashion. I don't even know if they make them at all, to be honest with you. So, over the, over the years of my time being at the club, and we've spent nearly a little over two hundred thousand dollars on electric mowers, uh, most recently in twenty thirteen, all of our, uh, greens are mowed with electric mowers, uh, lithium ion from, um, from Toro, and then we also have, uh, one ride-on machine that is fully all-electric. So, I, I just want to note that, that the club is, uh, you know, well ahead of, uh, you know, this ban as far as being sensitive to noise pollution and air pollution, uh, and we want to continue to be good stewards of the environment and, uh, good neighbors to the, uh, properties surrounding our club, um, and I think that, that shows, uh, a good, uh, progress, uh, on our, on our part. But, that, that's the main reason why we're asking for that, uh, exemption, is that some of our larger pieces of equipment, uh, do, do not have the, uh, the resources available in, in electric yet.
Michael, would you just describe what you mean by the larger pieces of equipment?
So we have, um, like, uh, some tow behind blowers behind a, uh, golf cart, we have a blower that will drive down the fairways, um, like I said, it's roughly thirty acres to clean the debris off of these surfaces before we mow them. You know, typically, it, it's leaves and sticks and, uh, you know, fruiting bodies from the trees, the maple samaras, the oak blossoms, any sort of, uh, small debris can cause damage to not only our mowers, but also the turf itself, just being so highly manicured, it's very sensitive to debris on it prior to, uh, mowing it. And that larger piece of equipment is used on average two to three times a week in season, during that May to September.
To, to the best of your knowledge, is anybody in the process now of developing electric equipment along those lines?
I have not seen it, um, if it is happening in, in R and D, in a, in a company, uh, they haven't made it, uh, very public. I know certainly the backpack blowers, the handheld backpack blowers and things of that nature on smaller pieces of equipment are readily available, uh, but as far as larger apparatus, I have not seen it.
Mayor, can I ask you a few questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
So, um, just for clarification, because I think I heard, I heard something, I just wanted to make sure it's accurate, so are all the lawn mowers electric at this point?
Not all of our lawn mowers, but certainly the ones that we use most frequently.
Okay.
Green, our greens are most sensitive and highly manicured turf, they're mowed six days a week.
Those are electric?
Those are, we have some gas, but all the ones that we use, certainly close to the properties, the residences, um, we only send out electric.
Yeah, I remember you've done that for years, right?
Yes, we, we've done that for years, and then our, our fleet kind of has aged, and we've recently purchased these new ones in two thousand and twenty.
And are you, I'm just wanting to clarify, clarify, and the, the greens, the tees and the clubhouse, those are all being done with electric blowers? Or you're proposing that you're due with electric blowers?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
We're proposing that during that timeframe of May to September, to the best of our ability, we want to use as much as electric as possible for our blowers.
So you're focusing in on the greens, because some of this is, we didn't want to build in, you know, any conditions and stuff, so you're looking to, so the greens, the tees, the clu- and around the clubhouse, you want to use, you're proposing to use electric if you're not already?
Correct.
And so the exemption you're requesting, just to be clear, is on the fairways?
Correct, and our, our, just our larger, uh, tow behind blowers.
Yeah.
And you'd be comfortable that being in the resolution, that you would use the electric on the tees, the greens and the clubhouse?
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm actually most concerned about the ones abutting Country Ridge, uh, Drive. There are three, um, that abut most of the houses down there.
Right, as a quick, as a quick question to that point, um, you know, being someone who's very familiar with golf courses, um, are you blowing, when you're going, when you're blowing the fairways, are you going down the center line, blowing to the rough, or are you trying to blow away from the houses down there?
We try and blow away from the houses, obviously wind direction sometimes doesn't allow that, but, uh, to, to the best of our ability, we just try and blow into the rough.
But I mean, towards the, away from Country Ridge?
Away from, yes.
Right.
And we've been in-
Well, it's the fairways, it's the fairways. Right. And it's tough because, hey, that's two, three, four, so is that, you're probably hitting those early in the morning.
All, all the, uh, greens that you see, uh, along County Ridge Drive, we have been mowing with electric mowers since I started with the club in twenty nineteen.
Right, I, I think, uh, you know-
The degree.
Trustee Epstein's concern is with the, with the actual blowers that you're trailing behind, and then, you know, I don't, I don't know if you work interior to exterior, you probably don't, because that's your early holes, so.
Well, no, we, we do work for the fairways, we work from our shop towards County Ridge Drive, so by the time we hit County Ridge Drive with blowers, it's ten, eleven o'clock in the morning, so as far as staying within the parameters of the noise ordinance-
Right.
It's well past eight o'clock during the weekdays that we make noise over there.
Right.
Regardless of the routing of the golf course, holes two, three, four, which are along that, that, uh, line, we always mow those last in our rotation, um, for that practice-
Right.
And purpose.
It's not the noise.
Right.
Not enough of the noise.
Right.
We've had other people, that's the only one where they're near houses.
Right.
This yellow line right here is, is about a hundred feet, three hundred feet, and getting up to five hundred feet or five-
Yeah, it's only the three holes that I'm most concerned about, that are about the houses, because I, I, I do hear it.
Of course you would, telling us, planes and everything, everything else.
Yes, I understand, it's very loud and it's a very large piece of property, there, we have asked other people, not just yourselves, to see what you can do about those that are abutting the house, can you use other equipment on those holes?
There's no, uh, there's no electric-powered equipment that will clean the debris off of those, those surfaces, given the, the large acreage. At this, at this point in time.
All right, so, I mean, at this, like, Chris, it sounds like we have, at least in the, in, this would be a commitment for the tees and greens, electric and clubhouse.
And around the clubhouse, yeah.
All right.
How did they do in nineteen fifteen?
Before, before the advent of either gas or electric blowers, how did they manage fairways? I assume golf-
Back in nineteen fifteen?
Golf anti-dates-
Twenty-five.
Yeah, golf anti-dates these blowers.
Well-
Yeah, goats.
Otherwise, yeah, a lot of, ooh, goats.
Well, it's just technology over those, you know, over a hundred years has grown so much that, you know, a green was being cut at a half an inch back in nineteen fifteen, now we're, we're, you know, sub point one hundred of an inch, uh, to, to mow the surfaces, so.
So I'm, I'm not a golfer, I was just talking about the fairways where you're now using uh, uh, gas-powered leaf blowers, but prior to the advent of gas-powered leaf blowers or electric leaf blowers, I assume somehow these fairways were cleared of leaves, I'm just curious as to how?
Yeah, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't speak onto that, but, um, certainly the, the standards were much lower than they are today.
I'm not a golfer, but I just, I don't envision them wading through piles of leaves as they play golf.
No, I, I, yeah.
Are there, um, just as an aside, are there equipment conventions? Do you attend equipment conventions or anything like that?
Yes, absolutely, we have a, a couple of different, uh, conferences that we attend throughout the year, some more regional, and then we also have a national conference for Golf Course Superintendent's Association of America, uh, so we're constantly being good stewards of the environment and taking educational classes and seeing the latest and greatest technology, equipment and products that are available to us.
I mean, personally, I'm, I, I, you know, I think, I think I, I, well, I certainly understand the necessity, and I understand it's a different type of property than a lot that we're dealing with, um, you know, it's, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm very happy to hear the commitment for the tees and greens and the clubhouse, you know, I'm, I'm prepared to go with the one-year exemption on this, I don't know how everyone else feels.
Is there a way to cut some of the noise?
I know.
We've had people cut back on the, um, decibel level in some way, how, is there any way you can do that?
We can, um, take that into consideration to, you know, on those particular holes, two and, two and four, to-
So we've had a couple of, but a five last month.
Reduce our throttle a little bit, but it will take longer, so that the noise will last longer in that, those areas.
What would the decibel level flip to? What's the difference?
I, I don't have those numbers offhand.
You know, we had other people do that last meeting.
Yeah, that's not gonna, that doesn't really work on these things, though, that's, I'm, I'm familiar with the tech, I'm familiar with the machines that they're using and certainly have seen them plenty, it's, it's tough, and hopefully the technology gets there, you know, I would, I think we would ask that, you know, keep moving forward with electric as much as you possibly can, um, you know, please try and keep our neighbors in mind, you know, your neighbors, our residents in mind.
The country ridge drive that I'm most concerned with, obviously the Blind Brook is not a problem, the clubhouse, there's nobody that lives near that, that's all people that are staying there that are yours, and the enclave has a greater buffer.
Yeah, enclave's at the end of the range.
People by Country Ridge do not have a big buffer, a hundred feet is not a big buffer when there's nothing there.
I, I can assure you that we have, uh, constant dialogue among my staff of trying to be as sensitive and careful with noise well prior to this, uh, leaf blower ban, I mean, even if it's, we have a north wind that day, we really try and be careful because we know how sensitive and how noise carries, so I assure you that we're, we are, uh, continuing our efforts.
I appreciate that.
And I would, I would add, just from my experience, and somewhere, I couldn't remember the year, but it was somewhere in the first, between two thousand, two thousand and ten, we got some noise complaints on Country Ridge for the grass mowing, and Blind Brook within short period of time, weeks, had all, uh, on all those holes had, uh, had electric, uh, lawn mowers out there, so, you know, I have to say, they were very responsive in that instance, and, you know, have continued to be on the electric, uh, on the grass blower, on the grass gun.
And Chris, just to add on that, too, I mean, I've sat down with a lot of the applicants, and to be fair, they've done more than, than pretty much all of them that I've sat with, at least already, and what they've committed to do.
We appreciate that, appreciate the efforts. Many questions I want to ask, but they're not related to this. It's a, it's a rainor, right?
Yeah, yes.
All right, that's my thought.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. And I heard that the fifth green was changed.
All of them were changed, restored.
Restored.
They cut down a lot of, um-
I loved it when it was a postage stamp.
I know, and you, you worked it, and you cut down a lot of the trees also, so is that easier for you to maintain now?
We, um, we cut down s- some trees interior, uh, but we also planted along Country Ridge Drive, a lot of evergreen trees, spruce trees, cedar trees.
But I know, but I'm talking about is it better for you now with less, uh, deciduous, uh, trees?
It's still a lot of debris, there's still a lot of, of trees on property, so it, it's enough debris to, to keep us busy, for sure.
Mayor, would you like me to read the conditions as I understand it?
Please.
Okay. The, the Board of Trustees hereby approves a one-year extension, um, of the village code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for the Blind Brook Golf Club, and be it further resolved that the approval of the exemption includes the following conditions, and that's that the greens, tees and around the clubhouse, um, shall use, uh, electric leaf blowers during the seasonal leaf blower ban period. And all, and, and that's it, that's it.
Yes.
That's one year, and that one year shall go to September thirtieth of next year, because after that, you can use it, so that then comes back, gives you time to come before May first of the following year, should you ask for another extension or request.
Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser? Trustee Morlino? Yes, Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, resolution number four, considering intermunicipal agreement between the village of Rybrook and the town of Eastchester for the purchase of a LL five OBD SCL eight hundred tow behind leaf pack. I mean, how many letters?
I know. Well, you know what it is, they don't have, uh, identifiers except for serial numbers, and that's-
There we go, all right.
Whereas the village of Rybrook has a tow behind leaf pack that is no longer operational value to the village operations, and whereas on November twenty-eighth, the Board of-
It's a bad, it's a bad, it sucks, it doesn't blow.
Yeah, and whereas, on November twenty-eighth, the Board of Trustees declared the leaf pack as surplus, and whereas the town of Eastchester has expressed interest in purchasing the tow behind leaf pack from the village, and the village of Rybrook has determined that there's a public benefit in selling this equipment to another municipality, and whereas legal counsel for the village of Rybrook has drafted an agreement between the village and the town of Eastchester, allows for the purchase of the leaf pack, now therefore be it resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the IMA between, the, uh, purchase agreement between the village of Rybrook and the town of Eastchester for the purchase of the tow behind leaf pack from the village of Rybrook, subject to modification by council, and be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a mayor, uh, can I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Motion? I second it.
Thank you.
I just want to make one modification, and that's just to include the cost in the resolution, I just don't see it listed there.
Gotcha.
So, um-
Five thousand six hundred.
Yeah, it's in the amount of five thousand six hundred dollars.
All right, was this the one that we put up as surplus last meeting?
What's that, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions or comments?
Nope.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you, I apologize, it's been a long day. All right, uh, resolution number five, considering an intermunicipal agreement between the village of Rybrook and Westchester County for Westchester Records Online.
Hey, whereas Westchester County allows the village of Rybrook staff to rem- remote access to vital Westchester County records free of charge under the Westchester Records Online System, and whereas the village of Rybrook seeks to continue to have access to the Westchester Records Online System to help support the personnel and our village personnel and their day-to-day functions, and to better serve the residents of Rybrook, and whereas under the proposed agreement, the village of Rybrook will have continued access to that system to access important documents, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the IMA with Westchester County to continue granting the village of Rybrook personnel with access to the records online system, subject to modification by council through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and be it further resolved, the mayor and the administrator are, are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
I think that's fairly self-explanatory.
We use this, we use this system all the time.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, any questions or comments?
Nope, it sounds good, that's something we do every year, I guess, that's-
Yeah, it is, it is, and we all, we have access, and where we get all our, huh?
Yeah, we've been having access.
Yes.
It's good.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Uh, resolution number six, considering reallocation and closing of capital project account in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Now therefore be resolved that the following transfer between capital projects be approved, and that's a transfer from sanitary sewer improvements to relining manhole rehab work, a different, uh, project account in capital in the amount of two hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars and sixteen cents, and be it further resolved that the, uh, it's basically restated, there's an original budget, a modified budget reflecting that change, and be it further resolved, the capital project be closed and removed from the project length schedule, and that's the sanitary sewer impro- improvement project.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Again, I think fairly self-explanatory, we thank Trish for all of the work she does on these, really keeping it, keeping our budget tight, which is good and, and makes it so the audit goes much quicker every year.
Much smoother, every year.
Which is, which is, which is good, because the shorter the, the shorter that presentation, the better.
And what it is, what this project is doing, too, is it's transferring the balances from an older project that we completed work on, and it moves it forward into our continuing reinvestment into our sanitary sewers, so when we, you know, we do the inspections, and then we go and the follow-up, and as required, also, under our agreement, we save the sound, we then follow up section by section to do relining, uh, manhole parjing, and Michael coordinates that with, uh, the various contractors, working in the village.
Great, can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I'm just fascinated by the two words, manhole rehab. When I think about a hole, I don't immediately jump to, oh yeah, how can I rehab that hole?
David, you should-
I have to.
Trustee Heiser should watch a video that Michael has of them parjing manholes, it's a job nobody wants.
Can you send it to us?
Is it on Netflix?
It's a job nobody wants, literally, somebody goes into the manhole and sprays concrete to redo the walls of the, of the manhole, so you're down in a pit spraying concrete in an enclosed space. It's, it's a horrible job.
Oh, I'm sure the PPE is crazy.
Yeah.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
As long as I don't have to do it, yes.
Is it Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
On that note, yes. Resolution number seven, considering a twenty-three, twenty-four budget transfer for a police department locker.
Whereas the village has a need to purchase an additional locker for the most recent police officer appointment, and whereas a transfer is needed to purchase the locker, now therefore be resolved that the village board approves the volume budget transfer in the current fiscal year for the purpose of purchasing a new locker for the police department, as a transfer from contingency to the police materials and supplies line in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
We were very excited to appoint Officer Alexander to her role earlier today. And so we need to make sure that she has the resources available to do her job properly.
Yes.
Yes. Clearly, this is needed.
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Heiser?
Yes.
Trusty Marlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight, considering authorizing submission of a grant application to the New York State Department of Transportation for the twenty-twenty-three Transportation Alternatives Program and Department of Transportation for the twenty-twenty-three Carbon Reduction Program and approval of local match contributions.
Lot of acronyms in this one, like most government programs, it says. So the Village of Rybrook seeks to implement traffic calming measures and pedestrian safety improvements in our, within the downtown region and basically a one point one mile area south of, uh, south of North Ridge Street and Westchester Avenue, north of Garibaldi, east of the Port Chester Middle School and west of Bowman and Westchester Avenue intersection. And whereas the D, New York State DOT has a TAP grant or Transportation Alternatives Program grant which provides federal aid for projects related to surface transportation, safety and mobility improvements. And whereas the DOT Carbon Reduction Program grants, uh, grant provides federal aid for projects related to carbon emission reduction via transportation, safety and mobility improvements. And whereas the village has opted to submit one application to the TAP for the TAP grant and the New York State DOT grant for the downtown Rybrook multimodal accessibility projects, which comes at a cost of three point four, three billion four hundred seventy-four thousand and fifty-five dollars. And whereas the New York State DOT TAP and CRP grant will fund up to eighty percent of the total project cost and requires a local match of at least twenty percent of the total project cost. And whereas the Village of Rybrook is requesting a grant in the amount of two point, basically two point eight million just underneath that and is committing to funding the remaining six hundred ninety-four, eight eleven, which is the twenty percent share through local funds. Now therefore be resolved that the governing body of the Village of Rybrook, um, has authorized the submission of this application as approved the required local match. And be it further resolved, the administrator is authorized to execute the grant agreement and signature of the village administrator continues acceptance of the terms and conditions of the grant agreement and approves the execution, execution of the grant agreement.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second?
Second.
We are very hopeful that we can get this grant. Um, maybe, Chris, you can describe a little bit how it relates to the comprehensive plan?
Sure. Yeah, this is a very big project. It's a very competitive grant. Um, we've submitted grants for this project in the past. Um, we've had meetings then with the follow-up, with follow-up with the grant, right, with the grant. Um, review teams that gives us suggestions on how the grant could be improved, the application could be strengthened, because it is very competitive. Um, so what this is, is strictly going straight along with our comprehensive plan recommendations to make certain improvements in the, what we think of as our downtown area. Um, it would make it much more pedestrian friendly, where, you know, adding sidewalks on the Ridge Street side where there's very little space on the, um, Ridge Street, sorry, the Ry Ridge Shopping Center side where there's very little space. That involves retaining walls and some, uh, also on the rest of the, make it a little more of a walkable downtown area where you would have to, you know, right now, we talked about in the comprehensive plan, having the sidewalks right on the street. So it would kind of create a buffer there where the sidewalks would be pushed back with more tree-lined streets along the way. Um, we've talked about branding and some, also some, uh, Westchester and Bowman making that into more of a smart signal like we have at, what, sorry, Westchester and Ridge making that into more of a smart signal like it is over at Bowman and Ridge. Um, so there's a whole list of improvements to, it's a big project, it's a lofty project. But it's one that would change the, our, what we call our downtown, consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and as Chris mentioned, this is a very competitive grant. So, um, and I'm assuming, Chris, if it were to be awarded, we would probably ban that amount?
Yes, yeah, hundred percent. Yep.
So is this something that, uh, it's given out to one municipality or?
No, it's more, I think it's, uh, five, something like that. I forget how many there were in New York.
Five in New York State.
Yeah, I believe it's something like that. I don't, I can't answer that.
Wow.
It's, this is our, this is our project budget that we had to create. Um, we got a, we asked CalGree Construction to create a project budget based on the comp plan, which is difficult to do because it's really more of a, you know, huh? It's not specific, it's not like we have design plans yet. So, um, they, they created that no charge and, uh, we were able to get a, a project budget through that and, um, and come up with a project. So if the board wants to continue to implement those recommendations of the comp plan, this is the way to do it with eighty percent funded somewhere else.
That's great.
Who makes the decision?
Uh, New York State DOT and New York State, um, it's all New York State DOT and anybody else?
You probably have a selection committee.
Yeah, there's a group, there's a review committee who we've met with representatives after the last time we submitted to make improvements.
Input from our past applications that we could...
Yeah, that's why we tightened up the budget. We created more specific work. We added more material into it. Um, yeah, we got, we had a lot more detail. It's much, it's a more refined application now.
Great, nice job.
Well, it's, fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
Is our grant company helping us with this?
They're the ones who write, who write the grant with our coordination. Even when we interviewed the review team, they were part of that interview process.
And have we ever received any grant in the past for something, this amount of money? Uh, this would be the first time?
We haven't received it yet, no.
No, if we received it. I should say.
We've received commitments for larger grants. We have a commitment for the county.
Well, we got tw- twenty-eight million dollar project right now for, uh, for the Brook Lane one. That's, that's the biggest one I know of.
Oh, good. Okay, well, that's for the, yeah.
That's the biggest. But, uh, no, we got two point eight from the county for the ball fields way back when.
That's good. So we're good, alright.
With the turf. We've done pretty well with...
Done pretty well, okay. Great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're aware of it. They're aware of our requests and...
Good.
Yeah.
So Port Chester School Board and...
So they become aware of it. And a lot of that is to help, like, we, we went out there and took pictures of the, the flow of the, of the pedestrians, particularly at school drop, uh, let-out areas.
Yeah, that's important.
And that was shown, that was meant to put in the application. So we show, uh, you know, that has to be stopped, doesn't always stop, and the kids, and we showed the volume of the kids
Kids, that's good.
That cross that intersection and the peak value. So that's the kind of stuff we've, that's all stuff we've enhanced the application with more information.
That's gotta work.
Video or just photos?
Photos. I took the photos.
It is a, never go there at three P M.
That's, and that's the point, you know, and there's, to be fair, it's not just the amount of the kids, it's also this capacity of the sidewalk that's there on one side.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Good.
After my bid, I'm going through, uh, Windridge and go upstairs.
Right. So, yeah, hopefully we can get the grant. Do we have a motion and second on this?
Motion.
We already, we already did.
Alright.
Any other questions or comments? I mean, it's...
No, I think it's great.
You know, it's, it's hopeful, you know, there's not that same, you know, that we're gonna get it, but hopeful, hopefully we can.
Well, you won't get it if you don't apply.
No, you won't. And, and, you know, certainly, you know, this is, in my opinion, absolutely worth applying village funds to if we were to be awarded this grant.
It would transform the look and feel of, of the area in a lot of ways.
Absolutely.
Will the school be part of it? The Port Chester School?
Well, they do select, write letters of support, things like that, but...
Are they meant to apply for a grant as well?
I don't know.
I don't know if they'd qualify because they don't own the roads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of the improvements, they've, we've looked at the things like flow, because some of it, they flow over to, uh, the kids will flow some of them to uh, Westchester Avenue rather than Bowman.
Right.
Um, and the school still does own that one...
The, the, the grant seems like a no-brainer. I don't understand that.
Where traffic was...
Right.
Right.
But having the kids walk up Bowman Avenue, having the entire dismissal go up Bowman Avenue just...
That's what I'm saying, having an alternate would be useful.
Well, maybe this project will give a sidewalk on that side all the way down to Westchester Avenue.
And the, the important part is that when, when the, the sidewalk alleviated that concern, and so it's a better situation now than it had been.
It's a very narrow sidewalk.
Okay.
Just something else to mention too, we also put in for the New York Forward Grant, which is very similar. So it's just another, other avenues. New York Forward Grant, it's a other grant we put in that's very similar to this one for their comprehensive plan. So it's just another avenue for us, uh, to try to get this comprehensive plan work done.
Whatever we can do. Alright. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Nope.
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yeah.
Trusty Heiser?
Yes.
Trusty Marlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number nine, considering an appointment to the Sustainability Committee.
Now therefore be resolved that, um, Alicia Castellano of Eight Hundred Drive in Rybrook, New York is hereby appointed to the Sustainability Committee for an unexpired term through the first Monday of April, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second?
Second.
We thank anyone who is volunteering for our committees. Uh, thank you for giving of your time to make the Village of Rybrook a better place to live.
Maybe now is the time to also remind people that they should think about it in the future also.
Yes, and we do have vacancies on other committees. And I would urge anyone listening to this, to, or watching this, uh, to give of themselves and volunteer. Uh, in the new year, I'll be sending out a mayor's message that, uh, lets people know where we have vacancies and how they can apply.
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Heiser?
Yes, and thank you.
Trusty Marlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number ten, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting, meeting held on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrator's report.
Just a couple of quick items. So leaf program is really winding down at this point. Um, yeah, it's very, we're taking more, more and more trucks off the road. You know, what you're getting is after the weekends, you know, some piles out there, that kind of thing, but, but, uh, really, the program's winding down at this point, which is nice, because we, it's kind of started a little later and now it's kind of ending early, which is nice.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I didn't see any leaf trucks driving. It was, seemed like...
It was a, it was a smooth program, knock on wood, this year. It really was. It was steady, I guess. We never got that one big pile up. Uh, Winterfest was a rainy day, but I think everyone who came, you know, it's a lot of work that goes into it, but I think everybody, the way I looked at that, anybody who came out seemed to have a great time. So that's what's important. Unfortunately, the rain, you can't do much about. But, uh, it was, it was a nice day for those that came, a nice time for those that came out. Um, just village offices are closing at noon tomorrow, uh, for our village event. And also, uh, our sanitation schedules will be modified on the two holiday weeks. That's all I have for tonight.
Alright.
Thank you.
I have to say, you know, thank you for all the crews that were out there with the leaf piles. It was, uh, actually, it was kind of funny because I did some work, I think, over the weekend, right? I'd gotten a... Alright, I've gotten a, uh, firewood delivery and I moved everything. There was some leaves, I raked up the leaves. I was like, you know what? Let me keep raking. And I moved a bunch of leaves to the front of my property. Next day, they were gone. I was like, wow, I timed that great.
So you used a rake and not a floater?
Oh, I use a rake. No, no, I use a rake. I, I actually enjoy it and I still...
Good exercise.
Yeah. I use a rake and a tarp when there's lots of leaves, but I use...
And just a reminder, if you go on our website, you could see every day that they were on your street, how many pickups you had, how many days they were there. Uh, well, you'll see there's a lot of recurring days in the beginning and the end because it's picking up quick and they're just rotating through. But, you know, you'll see it stretch out. In the middle, you'll see it being, you know, a week or two weeks in between certain collections. But if you're curious to see how that all flows, you could go look at your street and see how many collections you had, how many times they passed your street. So we, we record all of that.
Maybe we could remind some of the people who look for exemptions of this, uh, new technology called a rake.
And they make it, they make it nice and wide too. You get a good...
Electric rake.
Electric rake.
Electric rake.
Sounds like a song to me.
So, uh, and it happens.
That was good. That's clever.
And it, and it happens that this is our final meeting of twenty twenty-three. I want to thank everyone for a great year in Rybrook. Thank you to all the staff. Thank you to all the volunteers. Thank you for everyone here for, for this long meeting, for our last one. It's still only nine-thirty, but, uh, and, you know, we, we, we wish everyone a very happy last couple of days of Hanukkah, uh, Kwanzaa and the upcoming Christmas season, uh, and a very happy and healthy new year. Our next meetings will be January ninth and January twenty-third of twenty twenty-four. Thank you all. I'm gonna have, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
That was an efficient meeting.